Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. It is Monday, February 18th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Reverend Mathias, can you please take the roll?
Okay. Ms. Schadke is excused. Ms. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, here. Mr. Ross is excused. President Grant?
Present.
And Quorum?
Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
A moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 (inaudible).
We have a President's Day item for celebrations today.
Yes, we have one celebration this evening, and I would like to ask Dr. Kalambula and John Helmholt to come forward and share with us, and also introduce our guest.
(inaudible). Thank you, Mrs. Evans, President Grant, members of the board. It's an honor to be here today. Not too long ago, a friend, Dan Hibma, gave us a call and said, "Hey, I have had some experience with Mount Vernon and had some ideas for us." And, you know, it was, it's only fitting that we're here today to celebrate on President's Day as we are beginning to develop a relationship between our teachers, professional development, and Mount Vernon to study the history of our first president, George Washington. And Dan Hibma has been an avid fan and someone who has, he and his wife, Terry Lindland, our former Secretary of State and former Kent County Clerk, is here. They have been members of, I believe it's the Mount Vernon Ladies Association, so, and from there, there's a little history about how we got connected, where they have a summer professional development program where teachers get a chance to go out and be at Mount Vernon. And Dan and his family said, "We'd love to sponsor this." And so, one thing led to another, and we had our first teacher who was out there to experience it, and now we're actually working to send additional teachers out this summer and bring a very important professional development, bringing them to Grand Rapids to work with our teachers. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and he can maybe give a little bit more history, and I'll jump in with him a few times.
Yeah, please do. Assistant Superintendent Evans and President Grant and the board members, thank you for this opportunity. As I mentioned, my wife is here with me and supporting, and I don't usually get involved in talking to anybody at a public meeting. But, but, yeah, so we joined the Mount Vernon Ladies Association about 10 years ago, and of course, you get newsletters. And in '17, I got a newsletter that talked about the curriculum they had, and they also had a summer program. And so, I called, you know, like someone would do, I called and said, "Hey, what's the summer program?" So, what it is, is the teachers, a select number of teachers, 20 in a week, 20 teachers, they have six weeks of programs, they have 1,000 applicants, so you have to apply for it, and they go and live right on Mount Vernon and learn about George Washington, his life, his family, the whole times, and all the different other details. Heather Kwame can fill that in. And so, I asked the lady, Allison Whitkins, who's the Vice President of Education there, you know, "Has anybody been there from West Michigan?" She said, "No, there's only been one person from Michigan." And that lady lives in, and works in Ann Arbor, and I called her up. She said nothing but glowing things about it. So, I said, "Allison, what about if I sponsored somebody to go? Could I, could we make sure somebody from West Michigan could go?" And she said, "Well, it's such a competitive thing that I can't promise you, but a check wouldn't hurt."[278.12][278.12](laughter) So, so I, so then what I did was, I thought, "Well, this is really cool." So, I went around to the different school districts, I talked to curriculum people, at least I tried to get an adored in some places. And actually, I went to eight different districts. And the most responsive district was John and Malonge. And I tell you, it was, I'm sure you've faced it before, where you have an idea, and people look at you with blank face and don't do anything, and just think, "Oh, my gosh, maybe this is not a good idea." But when I talked to them guys, they were excited. So, you got some good two people here. So, so we went through the process. Malonge encouraged Heather to apply. She, she went. She can tell you about that. And so, of course, once, once you have a success, you kind of like to do it again. So, we're sponsoring another one this year. And in addition to that, in talking with Allison at Mount Vernon Association, they talked about how they could bring Mount Vernon out to the school district. I thought, "Wow, that's even a cooler idea." So, of course, who am I going to ask? I asked Malonge, "Do you think that's a good idea?" And he said, "Of course." So, so they're working it out. I don't know all the details, but we agreed to sponsor that. And in August, they're going to have a time up to 20 teachers?
Forty.
Forty teachers. Forty teachers will be able to experience that. So, we're just happy we're here. My wife and I are happy we're here, and that we could help participate and match up Grand Rapids Public Schools with George Washington's Mount Vernon, because if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't have the United States of America. So, I just really, he's, he's the person I admire the most in that regard. So, thank you to John, and thank you to Malonge.
Heather, you want to share some of your experience?
I'd love to. This was an amazing five-day experience. I came back saying, "I didn't know what I was getting into when I signed up and applied," but it sounded really exciting. Think of it as a five-day-long graduate course. We had guest speakers, lecturers from other universities, we had homework assignments, but some of the things that we got to do were amazing. The theme of the week that I was there was Martha Washington and the women of the 18th century. We had five days of tours, lectures, projects, and experiences, and we got to stay in the ladies' quarters. I hadn't realized that it was ladies of America that saved this mansion. When they saw that it was in disrepair, several women got together and raised the funds to purchase it and take care of it. So, staying in their ladies' quarters on-site was an amazing experience. There were so many things, I can't go into all of them with you in this meeting tonight, but I wanted to share a few highlights. One of the very first things we got to experience was a couple of guest performers. The Hildebrands came and brought 18th-century instruments and played for us some 18th-century music as they dressed in 18th-century costuming as well. So, it was very much the experience that the Washingtons would have had in their own home. You know, having some musicians play, it was right after dinner, it was lovely. And they were able to give us a lot of the history of some of the music and the instruments, and explain to us how important it was to the Washingtons to have music in their home. We did a lot of hands-on activities, just like the kids. It was fun for the teachers to do things like make bowls out of clay, the way the Native Americans of the area had done it. We spun wool. We learned about how to do weaving. They even had us use cardboard and yarn to glue together a little sheep to help us remember how important the wool industry was for the Washingtons there, and why he chose to use those animals on his plantation. We got extra special tours. Inside the mansion, we were able to go into places that were usually roped off, so we got the behind-the-scenes tour. The library has a secret room. One of the highlights of the experience was watching the wall swing open and realizing that even if you made it past all three other forms of security, you might not even know it was there. We got to see some of Washington's actual signatures on things, some of the letters that were written to and from Martha. It was really exciting to be able to go in and see these actual documents. We had expert-led tours of the grounds, so the gardener took us on a tour. We had people that were in charge of each of the different stations give us tours. We had someone explain all the farm equipment that was there, the experiments that he did, all the landscaping features, some of the buildings and why they were there. I want to let you know that this is not just an experience for me, that this is an experience that I bring back here to GRPS and to our students. So, some of the things that they have taught me to do as part of this experience would be to play some of that cultural or period music while the students are working. So, if we are studying a certain timeframe or a different culture from around the world during our social studies and history lessons, I might play some of the music from those areas. It's one of my favorite memories of what I did while I was there, and it's easy with our technology resources to find things online to share with the students. The hands-on activities that I was able to do while I was there helped cement some of the learning for me. So, things like having my students use their own pens to make hieroglyphic writing, or using finger signs to help us remember what the Bill of Rights was for. And later on this year, we will be studying the difference between cotton and wool as we get into some of the Civil War history that we'll be learning. In addition, the Mount Vernon Institute provides a lot of online resources. There's a virtual tour, so if any of you feel like you missed out, you are welcome to go to their website and take the tour on your own. They have quite a few lessons and activities, and one of my students' favorites was the opportunity to be Washington. They have four examples online where you can go and hear some of what was happening to Washington at the time when he was either a general or a commander. And you can hear the advice he has been given by others, read excerpts of books that he would have written himself, and then you get to make the decision that Washington was faced with, and then find out whether or not Washington made that decision.
That's awesome.
So, it was, my students had a really good time with the Battle of Trenton.[669.00][669.00](laughter) So, yeah, so they, they definitely enjoyed that, and I can tell you, I did the activity while we were on-site and couldn't wait to come back and do it again with my class. That they, it really puts you in that place and makes you think, "Well, what would I have done if I were in his shoes?" It was a fabulous experience, and I'm so glad to hear that we have other teachers that will be benefiting from this as well. I do have a special thank you for you. I wanted to share some of the visit with you as well.
Oh, nice.
So, I have for you a booklet of some of the things that we got to do, so you can see what it was like to be at the Teacher Institute.
Oh, that is nice. Oh, yeah.
With pictures and descriptions of what we were doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was fabulous.
Thank you so much for helping our teachers to, to learn and bring that experience back for our students.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Next, we have a report from Mr. Calderon, our student representative.
Good evening, everyone. Teachers and students at Union High School are currently preparing for the SAT, which is going to be taken by all GRPS students on April 9th. Eight students at Union High School received scholarships from the Grand Rapids Community Foundation that range from $250 to $750. These students are going to be using the scholarships to pay for the close-up trip to Washington, DC, and about 36 students are going to be going. At the beginning of this month, a senior at Union High School was chosen as the winner of the GRCC Latino Youth Conference Scholarship, which was $1,000. Last Friday, the Positive Behavior Intervention Support celebrated students who passed all of their classes during the first semester. Every single one of the students was, was able to eat pizza for free. And this Wednesday, we are going to be celebrating students in the 9th grade who got a 3.0 GPA or higher, students in the 10th grade who got a 3.33 GPA or higher, and students that are in the 11th and 12th grade who got a 3.5 GPA or higher. And these recognitions are going to be based on the first semester of this school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, do we have comment for agenda-related items?
We do not.
All right, wonderful. We will have the secretary's report.
Thank you. We have about four meetings that are happening this week and next week. The Academic Achievement Committee will be meeting Thursday, February 21st, at 4:30 PM here at the Administration Building. And then, next week, the Legislative Committee is meeting Monday, February 25th, at 1 o'clock. And also, the Finance Committee meeting is scheduled to meet on Monday, February 25th, at 4:30 PM. As well as, the Ad-Hoc Policy Committee is scheduled to meet Wednesday, February 27th, at 5:00 PM. And then, the City Board Liaison Committee is scheduled to meet Thursday, February 28th, at 2:30 PM in Room 101 in the Administration Building. That's all that I have.
Wonderful. Next, we have no committee chair updates, so we will move to the superintendent's report. Tonight, we will be briefed on the issue that has occurred at North Park Montessori. As a board, we have all been briefed throughout the weekend, but we'll have further information today. We know that a full investigation will be taking place, so we don't have all the answers, but we will be briefed tonight on as much as we know, and then we will get a thorough report for ourselves and for the community once the investigation has taken place.
President, we have Dr. Ron Gorman and John Helmholt coming forward. In the audience, we have Larry Johnson and Kim Clomp-Aaron, who is here also, who are also here to support if necessary. They will provide the update.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I know we've been communicating since about 6:30 on Friday, I think is when we had the first board communication. I've had additional communications, certainly we can answer questions about that. What we really wanted to focus on today was today's communication, what we, we know, what we've been putting out. First, just a quick update on everything that's happening at GRPS University in preparation for the transition and the opening of the North Park Montessori at GRPSU. District and school leaders, we were, we were there all day yesterday, planning the logistics, going through and looking at every possible scenario for what it's going to take to, to have GRPS University open and accepting all first through eighth-grade students at North Park Montessori. We are in the process of developing a site map, where we've identified all the classrooms so that parents will be able to receive, "Here's exactly where the classroom is, here's where the bathrooms are, here's where the health office is, here's where the main office is." There's also a map that will be providing details on where bus drop-off pickup is, where student drop-off pickup via vehicles, as well as the staff parking and the parent parking. And so, we're just going to go through all those logistics, make sure that they have everything that they need. The staff were there at 7:30 this morning. Hats off and shout out to that team. They have dynamic teachers, support staff, school leaders that are doing them, they have wrapped, they're wrapping their arms around this. They are doing everything they can to go above and beyond to make sure that those classrooms are ready. I know Dr. Gorman will reference a little bit more as we get closer. We did announce today that we were able to get micro air into North Park Building to get their prescriptions. We have a lot of students that we maintain and administer prescriptions. There's also inhalers, EpiPens, health information notebooks, and AEDs. We were able to consult with health officials, and micro air was able to go in and remove those items safely. The student medication was in a locked cabinet in their original containers that were also inside Ziploc baggies, so it was completely safe to pull those out and transport them. They are now in a secure area at GRPS University. Just a reminder, tomorrow night, there is going to be an open house. We've been really touting that to parents. This is not a parent meeting. This is intended to be an open house and really an orientation so students and parents can come and get acclimated, they can visit the classroom, they can walk around the building, get to, get the know-and-feel of it. We've made it very clear to the parents that we will have a follow-up to the Saturday meeting, that we are working with experts at the local county, state, and federal level to bring in the right team of experts so we can have time to really regroup with them, let this, this investigation continue, and then we will bring back meetings with parents specifically about the issues regarding the construction-related asbestos and the potential for asbestos exposure, which we don't know yet because there, we still need to do a more thorough investigation and additional sampling, which I'll talk a little bit more about in just a minute. On that, really, the last part is the investigation. We shared with parents, with staff, with you, and with the media today that we are fully committed to finding out exactly what went wrong, why it went wrong, how we can ensure something like this never happens. We are committed to best practices and ensuring all protocols and procedures are conformed to our expectations for the environmental and education quality. We are also committed to a transparent and thorough, independent sampling of and assessment of the potential asbestos exposure. To that end, there will be an outside third-party investigation. We are working with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. They are the lead public health agency. They are working with us to coordinate with all the other state agencies and federal agencies, as well as the Kent County Health Department. They will be advising us on the next step. They are in the process of organizing a meeting that we expect will happen in the next few days to be, for us to understand exactly what is the direction on the sampling objectives and process for moving forward to conduct those aggressive samples in the building, both air, surface, and then the carpet was something that the parents had said they wanted to see as well. Once we have that information, we will share it with you, we'll share it with staff and parents. We will let everyone know when that meeting's happening, what the outcome of that meeting is, what the timeline looks like. This is not going to be a couple days or a couple weeks. This is going to take time for this investigation to occur, for these extensive samples to occur, and to make sure that we have an appropriate assessment or view of those findings. We have emphasized to the parents and staff our thanks and appreciation for their patience. We are being overwhelmed with calls, with social media, with email, everything you can imagine. We have just asked, "Give us a little bit of time, give us a little space," so we can first focus on our top priority, which is getting the school open on Wednesday. And that we have also dedicated a new email address that's at northparkinfo@grps.org. We're trying to centralize all communications so that we can ensure there's uniform, consistent responses as we move forward. Turn it over to Ron.
Thank you. And just, just an update on what's been happening from a school's perspective today. The, the, the teachers showed up before the parent meeting on Saturday to receive a comprehensive briefing on what's going to happen this week. I think it was perfect attendance on Saturday morning for the teaching staff, just really a resilient, upbeat teaching staff that we have at North Park, and hats off to the leadership team there, as well as the teaching staff and support staff. This morning, we arrived relatively early. The, the, the building principal had a meeting with her team. Mrs. Evans' curriculum team was there. I sat in with that particular team. All of the curriculum coordinators are there, and what we did is, we met with all the different grade levels and all the different content areas, and our number-one priority when we left today was to ensure that they had the, the resources they needed from a curriculum perspective so that education would go smoothly as we opened schools on Wednesday. So, not only did we, this morning, address curriculum concerns, and that can be a little bit challenging because it's a Montessori program, so there are lots of manipulatives, but we also have lots of textbooks, teachers' editions, things of that nature. In addition, we also had to ensure that we had lots of office supplies because Grand Rapids, GRPS University, of course, is, is not a school right now, so we need to ensure that do all classrooms have whiteboards, do all classrooms have the technology they need to be successful. Mr. Johnson and Mr. Clomp-Aaron's teams were rekeying all the doors, working on teachers' key cards. We also have a lunchroom that's set up right now for adult learners, and so we had to move in some, some lunch tables that were for younger learners, so that happened today. When we, when we left the building today, and I think I left around 4 o'clock to get back over here, still many teachers in the building getting prepared for their work on Wednesday morning, so it just really shows how dedicated our teachers and administrators are to getting the building up and running. Tomorrow, we will continue to get set up for Wednesday. We will be fleshing out transportation and things of that nature. We will have a communication that goes out sometime early tomorrow afternoon that shares with parents exactly how all of these logistics are going to work, and then we will reinforce that communication when parents come in at 6 o'clock for the parent meeting. And so, tomorrow will be a day where teachers continue to get acclimated to their new space, and will also be a time tomorrow for teachers to set up classrooms with the support of the administration. So, it's amazing what can be pulled off in a short period of time, but the teachers and the administration of Norah Park are going to ensure that that building is ready to go Wednesday morning for students. Any questions?
How is our staff doing?
So, today, I saw staff members who were working in professional learning communities all morning. So, if it, they were working in grade-level teams, they were working in content-area teams. I noticed folks who were specials teachers, art, music, PE, all working together. Considering the circumstances, folks were relatively upbeat. Of course, there's, there's a transition. We did some check-ins from time to time. It's, my assumption is it's very difficult to move your entire program and, and move to a place where you had your belongings and now you're getting new belongings. But from what I saw today, folks were relatively upbeat and ready to get the school prepared for Wednesday. From what I observed.
In terms of staff exposure, how are we handling those pieces?
So, we did just receive, and I shared it with the board just a few minutes before coming down, is the Kent County Health Department did put out a health advisory with additional information about this, and I think one of the words of caution is just, "We, we don't know the level of exposure." This could be a very minimal exposure. The samples that were taken on Friday, these were samples after we learned that there was a potential breach of plaster that may have included asbestos. They took samples, they overnighted it to a company in New Jersey, and those results came back at 1:30 on Saturday, and they were found negative. So, that's relatively encouraging. However, they were in eight to 10 different rooms. We are working through the process of finding, when were they there, how much exposure was there? The work took place almost entirely, but not entirely, in the after-hours when staff and students were not there. And so, I think what we need is clear direction from the, the experts at the state level. We're waiting for them to tell us what is their expectations for the sampling. Once we get the sample, once we get that assessment data back, then we'll hear from the health officials the extent of the exposure and what it may mean. When you look at the document, the Kent County Medical Director was very clear that we are all exposed to asbestos on a virtual daily basis. And so, it's going to be a matter of the, the amount of the exposure, the type of asbestos, there's different types of asbestos exposure, as well as the length of time of exposure. And so, those will all be factors. We're going to know more in the coming days and weeks, but we've got to take the time to get the data.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have two action items this evening. Our first item is the MASB Region 3 Board Director. There are three candidates. I believe we are familiar with one of them.
I'd like to make it, can I?
Would you like to make a motion?
If you've reviewed your ballot, there's some impressive people on the ballot, but one particularly impressive person on the ballot. So, I'd like to nominate Kathy Lewis to receive our vote for the MASB Board of Directors, Region 3.
I'd like to support that.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. You want to take the?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Schadke is excused. Ms. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
I think Ms. Lewis can't.
No, I can vote. I, I, somebody called me to tell me that I could legally vote, but.
Yes, I think she'll do a good job.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
All right. Congratulations on our nomination.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our second item is the KISD Schools of Choice Resolution. We have Mr. Mel Atkins, who will present on the topic.
Good evening, Mrs. Evans, Board President and Board Members. The Schools of Choice provides families living within the ISD area a range of choices to obtain a quality education for their children. The plan is designed to provide the best possible education for the vast majority of children in the, in the ISD area who choose to live in their home district while accommodating the desires of people who like to transfer to another school. So, it's limited only by the seats available in the receiving districts, and so for GRPS, we are recommend, we, we are opening up 500 seats, and the time constraint's open during enrollment period, which is April 8th through May 10th. But a caveat to that, GRPS always goes to the first day of school, and so slots are available. Districts have space remaining, and after their initial choice, they can also do the, do the opening of schools, too. Almost as important is, I want to point out that all families and all students are eligible during the ISD Children's Choice Plan regardless of grade level, ethnic background, and student eligibility. Transportation is not provided for schools in choice enrollment, so that's a big one, you know, parents have to realize. And then, parents, and then, and so, that's, that's a big factor. And when you're looking at the Schools of Choice, a lot of factors that go into it is kind of what's being offered. Sometimes themed schools are very important with Schools of Choice. Sometimes, theme schools are very important with Schools of Choice, or if you have, or something, you're looking at another district offers, and one doesn't. But, it's, you know, it's very competitive. You know, we think here in GRPS, we have a lot of quality choices under Schools of Choice.
Wonderful. Any questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask one question, please. How many spots do we fill if we have 500 seats? How many are filled?
A good question. So, typically, we fill just over, maybe almost half, just under half, just over 200 of those. You know, but with the expansion of, you know, with the museum school, you know, Zoo, Blanford, Economicology, those are very popular city, and the other choices we have, we have, you know, the new program in Ottawa that's coming, and we're hoping to fill even more this year.
And what about, how many kids do we have go elsewhere?
Good question. So, we do have more kids leave than we receive at this point. The last check of the numbers, it was, last year, it was over 800.
And then, my question is similar. What is the trend? I mean, let's say, the past five years?
And so, the trend has been, we've been pretty steady. We've been opening up, for us, that 500 slots. We've been pretty steady around the same number of kids that are coming in, around, you know, 250, 275, depends on the year. And leaving, it ranges, but it's been pretty close to that number that I gave just a minute ago.
Do you see any correlation between the number of offerings and innovations that we've advanced and an uptick of in-district requests?
I see some. I see that as schools get more of a reputation on their feet, like City sells itself, as people find out the opportunities we have, like at a museum school, that becomes a bigger and bigger attraction as the years go by.
And then, lastly, is that a report that we might be able to look at some future date?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, are you saying then that schools like Museum, Economicology, and those kinds of schools get more people...
Continue to get the word out, I would say. We have so many offerings that, I know we had our School of Choice Expo recently, but the more we can say, even a word of mouth of, we have, we believe, strongly believe we have the plethora options for anybody. And so, most people know about City, but we have more than City.
There's a question. In terms of Central, have you seen an increase of student of choice choosing Central and its offerings?
And so, I'm going to look at my resident expert, Anna Stewart. You want to come up?
Hello.
Come here. Can I hear you? Tell you who you are.
Anna Stewart, I'm the Supervisor for Community and Student Services. We have seen a steady number at City, I mean, I'm sorry, at Central. Last year, or this year, we've added the School of, the Teaching School, so we'll be adding that. So, we're looking at raising more students, or bringing more students to that program, but the numbers have been steady in Central.
Thank you.
Do we have some sort of plan to recruit these kids from these schools that take our kids all the time, you know, because I think we do have opportunities for kids in the suburban schools that they may not be able to get at their home school.
Yeah, but working with John, Communications, there's always a plan. There's always a plan. And one of, if I can, personally speaking, I think the biggest thing we can do is be our best advocate. And so, when you're out in the community, when you're out at the beauty shop or the grocery store, you know, touting, you know, what GRPS has to offer instead of what it doesn't, sometimes it gets on the negative side. And so, we can support our own is key.
Okay.
I have one more question, sorry. How does it work as far as priority for who gets into the theme schools? Are kids in district...
Yep, yep. So, there is a criteria with at least our theme schools, and it kind of goes kind of 1, 2, 3, 4, but as far as the Schools of Choice, if space is available, you get in. If not, you have a lottery as well.
Thank you. Okay. Any more questions? No. Do I have a motion to opt into Section 105(c) for the State Schools of Choice Program? So moved. Support?
Support, then.
Reverend Matthias?
Ms. Schottke is excused. Ms. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias, yes. Mr. Ross is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Support?
Support.
Okay, let's take the vote.
Ms. Schottke is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Revere Matthias, yes. Mr. Ross is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any public comment for non-agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. We do not have, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have discussion items, I missed that. Do we have superintendent's comments?
No. No, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Flores?
No comment.
Dr. Baker?
No comment.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
I know, go ahead. Take the vote.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say, as somebody who's been a teacher and knows what it's like to have an occasional snow day, and you think, oh, good, a day off, except that after the second one, you start getting very nervous about how you're going to do all of this stuff. And I have to say that I feel for the teachers, the staff, the people who have, to make all these accommodations, it is not easy. And I am very proud of the way that Grand Rapids Public Schools has handled this terrible snow episode and ice episode. I know how hard it was, the decisions were, to be made because I was with Superintendent Neal and Mr. Helmholt when they were making the decision to close school, the concerns that they have and we all have about whether or not our kids are going to be fed, whether or not they're going to be warm and taken care of, and things were done so well, and I was so impressed, and I'm so proud of the way things were handled. And also, I'd like to mention that I know that this is a horrible crisis as far as the asbestos is concerned, but I'd like to congratulate all of the people who've been involved in trying to solve the problem and adjust to the situation. And once again, I have to congratulate the teachers because I know, I moved my classroom once in 37 years, and I know how hard that is, and so, I'm just very, very proud of these people and the kinds of adjustments that they have to make. So, thank you.
No comment.
And no comment from me. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.